September 10, 2018, work session of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Fryling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zeng.
Aye.
First item on the agenda, items for City Council meeting of September 14, 2018, and the first of those is council preview. Mr. Trivet, anything you'd like to highlight?
You know, the council meeting for Thursday is a pretty light agenda. We're going to be talking about the schedule and process for developing a legislative agenda, and then we have a budget amendment proposed by the Finance Department for just some housekeeping.
And we are staying flexible on whether or not that meeting is held depending upon the weather.
That's right, absolutely. We're monitoring the storm, which may very well impact the holding of the meeting and some other events during the week, and so just everyone should stay tuned to cancellation notices.
And a little bit earlier this afternoon, there was a conference call with the Governor regarding updates on the progress of the storm and emergency preparations. Chief Dent, would you mind saying a few words about that call and about the city's efforts to prepare and maybe what some of the residents should be thinking about?
Mayor Fryling, members of council, as I'm sure with everybody in the community, is keeping a close eye on Hurricane Florence. We've had several conference calls with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the National Weather Service over the last few days, keeping the most current information, receiving the most current information on the storm. We had conference calls today. As of the latest forecast, Hurricane Florence has increased to a category four storm with wind speed of 130 miles an hour. It's still anticipated that the storm will make landfall along the North Carolina coast. Some models have it a little bit more to the south of Wilmington, North Carolina. Some models have it directly into Wilmington, North Carolina, and that could happen, that's anticipated to happen on Thursday. We could start experiencing tropical storm force winds as early as Wednesday evening and definitely by Thursday morning. One of the things that's really concerning in the forecast for our particular area and really the Commonwealth of Virginia is the models are starting to agree that once the storm makes landfall, it's going to stall, which as of today, they're saying could cover the Commonwealth in seven to 15 inches of rain in a short period of time, and then linger, rain linger for several days. And with the ground already being saturated and any wind speed at all, we're going to see uprooted trees, and I would assume we're going to see significant power outages. The storm surge for coastal areas is anticipated to be catastrophic. The Governor is supposed to have a press conference later today indicating they're going to recommend evacuation of Zone A on the flood maps. For anybody that's watching the Know Your Zone map that was created two years ago in the Commonwealth, you can go online at Virginia Know Your Zone, and you can type in your address, and it'll tell you whether you're in a flood zone, an indicated flood zone. Fortunately for the city of Williamsburg, we're not in any of those flood-prone areas, and we're not indicated as a zone. There's only four zones. Those Zone A areas are low-lying areas on coastal Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Chesapeake, some in Pecosin and York County. So as you can imagine, it may be an impact to Williamsburg if those people choose to evacuate, that we may see an influx of people into the area looking for lodging until the storm passes. So that's one of the things that we're considering as we begin our preparations. We continue to coordinate with VDM and the National Weather Service and also our neighboring localities, James City County and York County, as we begin the cities making preparations for, to deal with this storm. We just had an executive team meeting just prior to this meeting to make sure that we're all making those necessary preparations for the worst impact from this storm. Some of the things we really encourage the community is, you know, even though we're not in a flood-prone area, one of the things to consider is if we get that amount of rain, the system, our drainage system just can't handle that amount of rain in a short period of time. So we could see some flooding, localized flooding on the streets and, you know, basement areas that I know would, may have some flooding issues as well. We always encourage people not to try to drive through those flooded areas. As you can see from some of the storms last year, there's one of the number-one cause of death in any hurricane is from drowning and flooding issues, so encourage people not to try to drive through those flooded areas. We'll be keeping everyone up to date with media, talking to LeAnn, media, social media and the website. She'll put the banner up tomorrow on the website, which will be an area that citizens can go, excuse me, and obtain all the information related to the storm. Also encourage everyone to make sure, now is the time to prepare. Make sure that you have a kit that you could sustain for 72 hours. That's water, batteries, flashlights. Make sure you take your medications with you, those kind of things, so in the event or without power, that you could sustain for 72 hours. Also, now's the time to clean up any of that debris outside of your home that might be blown around with increased winds. And really encourage everyone to sign up for Williamsburg Alerts. If they have not, go to our website and look for Williamsburg Alerts. We'll be sending out emergency messages as necessary through Williamsburg Alerts, so really encourage everyone to take advantage of that. Also, another problem that we've experienced in the past, a couple of problems, is make sure if you're using a generator that you do so safely and you're not using it indoors for carbon monoxide issues. And also, if there's downed power lines, to stay away from those power lines. You just consider every power line that's energized, and we've had issues in the past where you don't realize that even within three feet of a power line, you can still experience electrical shock. We've had several questions today about, already about our shelter. We don't have any plans at this time to activate the shelter, but as soon as that becomes necessary, we'll put that information out so that everyone in the community is aware that the shelter's activated and operational if they need to evacuate their property. I think that's some of the highlights coming up. We'll continue to monitor the storm and also have conference calls with VDM and the National Weather Service, and continue to communicate amongst our executive staff, and we're preparing an EOC staffing roster, so if we, in the event we need to prepare, activate our emergency operations center, we'll be prepared to do that as well.
Questions for Chief Dent? Chief, I'd just like to say, as much as any of us might worry about our family's safety, health and well-being during incidents like this, should the storm be as serious as it potentially could, I think we all want to thank you in advance for the fire team, EMS, Police Department, Public Works, and everybody in the city who continues to work around the clock away from your families trying to take care of the rest of us. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
This takes us to the public comment period. If anybody would like to comment on any of the items for Thursday's agenda, please come forward, or if you'd like to talk about today's agenda, that'd be fine, too. Seeing no takers, we'll move on to background presentations and discussion, the first of which is the Virginia Arts Festival Fun House Fest update. We have Mr. Rob Cross and Scott Jackson. Mr. Cross?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Fryling, members of council, and City Manager Trivet. We're really excited about giving you an update and a recap of this past season. We were here on June 22nd and 23rd, and if you remember, this year we shifted from a three-day event to a two-day event. We had fantastic artistic success. We had, speaking of weather, we had our weather incident on Friday night, so I'd like to say, special thanks to our public safety, both fire and police. We had a very smooth evacuation and a re-entry of the park, and we were able to get the entire concert in, so thank you for their hard work making that a successful, safe two days. Thought it'd be good to give a little bit of a, kind of a financial recap over the three-year course of the festival, in terms of the revenue side. You'll see that we had a slight, even though the event went from three days to two days, we only went back about $10,000 in revenue, and most of that actually was attributable to the rain delay on Friday night. If you look at the food and beverage number, it was down about $10,000, and I think that would have probably been close to the $60,000 had we been able to keep all the food trucks and wine and beer tents open during that Friday night period. Total attendance, I'm happy to say that even though we went from three days to two days, there was only about 300-person difference in attendance, and again, I think that was partly weather-related. So, as we know, for the first two years, our Friday and Saturday nights were by far the strongest nights, and our team and Mr. Hornsby's team really felt like to continue to grow the event and be successful, that two years would be, make for a more successful event, and I think this proved that out. I know that, obviously, in terms of the artistic side, which is important to all of us, this is also really built on tourism and the support we get from the tourism community, so I thought you would enjoy seeing where tickets are. We, again, just went back, as I mentioned earlier, a little bit of ticket sales. Interestingly enough, the out-of-town ticket buyers were up this year, and we're able to track through zip codes of our ticketing system, where ticket buyers are coming from and how long they're staying. So, our percentage of ticket sales went up for out-of-town ticket buyers, went from 52% to 55%. We had visitors from 32 states over the two-day period and three foreign countries. Here's the breakdown of where they came from. And I, last year, the council asked us if we could get more specific about where people came from, from cities in Virginia, since obviously, if they're outside of greater Hampton Roads, that's also filling up hotel rooms. And then I'm going to ask Scott Jackson if he will, who's the festival's general manager, talk a little bit about economic impact and some of our other marketing efforts, and also the overall education for the festival, which I also know is important to the city and to council. Thank you.
Thanks. So, just picking up on what Rob said, we did have an increase in the out-of-town visitation, and this is the single biggest part of the economic impact for us, is drawing people from out of town that wouldn't otherwise be here. So you'll see, we had over 4,000 out-of-town attendees. We had just over 2,000 hotel rooms booked, and based on our best estimate of spending per party, it's over $660,000 impact from those out-of-town people, so we're very pleased about that. That's an increase over last year, and we believe that can continue to increase. We, one of the things council will give us some guidance on, a year ago, excuse me, in 2017, when we presented to you the wrap-up, is you felt like we should have some more food and beverage options, and also more local options. So it was something that was important to us to build on, continue partnering with local food and beverage businesses, increase the number of participation of people, and increase the opportunities for the audience. So we had seven food vendors last year versus five the year before. You can see those vendors, and a number of them being Williamsburg-based. And then also beer and wine, we increased the options, and again, with a strong representation from Williamsburg, and we also believe we can continue to grow this in the future. We added a sponsor appreciation event. One of the sources of revenue for the event are corporate sponsors, so we did a reception at the Blue Talon Bistro in Merchant Square. I believe that was successful, and it helps us to keep those sponsors engaged and that we can continue to keep them involved in the future. We talked about out-of-town, how are we bringing people from out of town? Clearly, our marketing and public relations campaign is critical to that. You can see there were 27 print ads, there were 820 radio spots, a very targeted Facebook campaign that we think was probably the single most successful avenue for us to bring out-of-town people in, social media, e-blasts, direct mail, street teams. All, overall, we delivered more than 33 million impressions on Fun House Fest, and again, this is an increase over the prior years. This is just a summary of some of the places where we placed advertising, just to give you an idea of the breadth and the variety, and some of the press coverage we had, had for the event. I think this is exciting, too, to see an event in its third year that is still interesting, exciting to people, where you're not, you're not getting into a sense, oh, we already covered that. But every year, it's interesting, especially when you have artists change. Having Alison Kraus here was certainly something that was really interesting, drove ticket sales and drove interest. And also, one of the things that's near and dear to my heart, which I've been talking to council about for probably 20 years, is how much your students take part in the Virginia Arts Festival as a whole. So, every single fifth grader in Williamsburg James City County participates in the festival, goes on a field trip, and then we also have quite a few students have a group come, come work with them. The Birmingham Ballet came here, Charlotte Blake Alston came, Marari Brass. So, some terrific participation, and I think that's something, Fun House gets a lot of attention, deservedly so, but I want to thank you and remind you of that your support is also supporting participations by students, and say that that participation's really strong. Every single student that's graduated from, from the district for now 20 years has had a special opportunity through the arts, so we thank you for that. I wanted to leave you with one of our favorite pictures of Fun House Fest, and again, say we felt we had a great event, and we look forward in the future to giving you a brief on 2019 and our plans, and want to thank, if it weren't for the support of council, I don't believe this event would have happened, and I want to say thank you.
Questions, comments?
A comment and a question, but a comment would be, I was surprised and delighted to see that there wasn't a greater decline in revenue, having cut off Sunday. You know, one might expect maybe a 20%, but I think, you know, you guys did real well to make sure the ticket sales were still there, and food and beverage, the revenue was still there. So that's a real positive thing, and I think, leading into 2019, we can only grow. Any lessons learned that will make 2019, from 2018, that'll make 2019 better?
Well, I think most of the lessons are positive. We feel like the marketing, the marketing through Facebook and the targeted marketing seems to give us the best ROI, so we want to continue that. The fact that we were able to grow the out-of-town audience is exceptionally important, so I think those are positives. We got the more vendors involved, and I think we had our first really challenging weather event, which is some serious thunderstorms on that, on that Friday with our headliner. And Rob mentioned, I would just say again, that the city could not have been more professional, or both focused on the safety of our patrons and helping us, helping us get our event on and helping us do that. So, I think all the lessons were positive. I think the goal would be, can we continue to grow, can we continue to get more people from out of town, can we continue to grow the audience?
Thank you.
I want to echo Doug's appreciation as well, and I'll offer you a job well done. I believe the Governor and the First Lady were in attendance on the first night, which is always a good thing in promoting the event, but I think several indicators that you had already mentioned, is indicative that we can only grow from here. You know, I was pleasantly pleased to see, you know, that the total tickets, you know, even though it's up for a little bit, you still had an increase in out-of-town buyers, and the fact that it expanded even further out, throughout what we previously had seen in the past two years. Now, is that, I'm assuming that's because of the expanded marketing efforts by your staff, I'm assuming, just given the money. We had increased our allocation, which I believe was for marketing purposes. I'm assuming that had a play, a role to play?
I think both of those. I think if we get more sophisticated in targeted marketing, and I also think it will always be very much artist-driven. You know, we're lucky, you know, Alison had a new record coming out. She was, there was a lot of national support of her tour, so I think we have to be conscious of how that will always affect attendance.
Right.
But, you know, it's, I think, it's a fantastic time of year, and we're in front of some of the other larger festivals on the East Coast, so we're also getting people before their, you know, set disappearing forces for the summer, too.
One other note is, local ticket sales are more weather-sensitive than out-of-town, because out-of-towners have made plans, they've booked hotel rooms. So it's not surprising that with the tough weather we had on Friday, we probably lost local ticket sales more so than out-of-town. So again, as I look to the future, I believe we can build on the out-of-town, but most of that local ticket sale should rebound if the good Lord blesses us with some, some better weather.
And also, just to see that, the fact that we're able to, to grow from the first year in 2016, but to maintain from 2017, the reach to the foreign countries, the three foreign countries. Now, is that through a specific, not to get too much into the weeds, but is that through a specific agency that y'all contract with, or is that just based on just general marketing efforts that you guys already do?
I think it's, again, it depends on who's playing. Like, if there's someone that really, really wants to see Alison Kraus, and that's the date she can make. Bruce also has some out-of-country, you know, huge fans, so if he's doing a two-day event, they're going to show up.
Cool. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. It was a, it was a great event. I was there for, for both days of it, and I have to say that Alison Kraus was amazing. She gave a spectacular show, regardless of, you know, taking the break in between. Did you all announce her as being the headliner sooner this year than in the past? Because I think she was going to Wolf Trap the, the night after she was here, and, and just wanted to-
We got kind of lucky, to give you a short answer to a long, we have two complicated questions. So, we were able to announce earlier, and we definitely think that helped a lot. So, we were able to get our dates, date announced before Wolf Trap got announced, so I think we picked up a lot of sales that might have gone to Wolf Trap. So we, we are pushing to try to announce as early as we can, and it's, you know, it's collaborative effort with Bruce in terms of, you know, deciding who else he wants to invite to play, and also if they've made decisions on whether they're touring or not. Because, you know, in the commercial music world right now, a lot of them are wrapping up their summer tours as we speak, so a lot of them aren't even thinking about what they're going to do next year. We got lucky that Alison had decided pretty early on that she was going to go out, so we were able to lock down a date, and her and Bruce have worked together a lot, so make that connection directly.
Yeah, because I think she was definitely the draw from the number of people that I talked to. And as far as the food and beverage vendors that you all select, how, what is the process for that?
Well, we, we put out an application on our website for anyone that wants to participate, and we, we go through that, looking for who, you know, people that we think will add some variety. We, we give extra emphasis to the local businesses. And then also, on our own, we stock the VIP area and things like that. So again, we're looking for variety and try to, special emphasis on local businesses.
Because I noticed there were a couple of local ones that many of us and me sort of favor a little bit, that were not on the list, and so I'm hoping that some additional consideration can be given to those, because looking at the food vendors, three out of the seven were from Williamsburg, but four out of, four were from the other side of the, of the water. So, hoping that that can balance out a little bit more next year.
I think it definitely can, and if, if along the way, council has specific recommendations, we would be happy to follow through and at least see if someone's available and interested. It depends somewhat, particularly with a food truck on their schedule, you know, available. We did ask people for two-day commitments, because we wanted to make sure they were there Friday and Saturday, so in some cases, there were conflicts with, with food trucks.
Well, and, and also for, for beverage vendors as well, because they don't have to worry about the, the food truck part. And you were mentioning the sponsorship, but I didn't see a line item for sponsorship under revenue. Did I miss that?
I think we might have put it under a, kind of a broader category, but let me look and-
Other cash sources, I believe.
Okay, because-
Yep, other cash sources includes, would include all the sponsorship.
Okay, because in the previous two years, you had cash sources and a separate line item for sponsorships.
Yeah, I think those prior years, it says VIP tent sponsorship. We had a specific company, but they, we didn't have a specific company for the VIP tent, but in all three years, we've had a variety of companies that were general sponsors that fell under that broader category.
Okay. Because that stayed, mm, close to the same from last year, then. All right. Well, thank you, and look forward to announcement for 2019.
Thanks a lot. Good work. Unfortunately, I missed it, I was on vacation. We had talked about before, in 2017, there didn't seem to be a plan for accommodating people with mobility challenges, in terms of walking distances and having to stand in line for a long ti, a period of time. How did that change for this year? Sure. So, we were able to put in more entries closer to the parking lots that were handicap accessible. We were also able to use the lot, I'm, I'm not going to have my north-south correct, but if you're standing at the stage looking out, there's a city-controlled lot immediately to the left, and we were able to get a couple hundred spots in that lot that we had control over the weekend, and that's where we directed people that had accessibility issues. Thank you.
Just a couple, a couple of questions and a comment or two. Talk about out-of-town guests. How do you define out-of-town?
Sure. So, we worked with the guidance that Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tours Alliance gave us, and they had basically what zip codes they considered local and what they considered out-of-town. But I think it's essentially, the, the goal is to identify who would be staying overnight. So we were looking for people that were outside, let's say about a, a two-hour drive radius, with the intention to capture who's, who's going to be taking lodging.
That's pretty, pretty broad to be in town two hours away. What was really impressive to me about the response on the, to the Friday thunderstorm, Friday night thunderstorm, after we left, I thought, well, nobody's going to come back. We came back afterwards, and the place was packed again. So the number of people that returned after, I don't know if it was 30 minutes-
It's a, it's a good point. We, we think about 80% of the audience returned, which we were stunned by, that, how many. Again, I think it's the out-of-town folks, that if you've bought a ticket and you're spending a couple nights, you're not going to let the, the rain discourage you. I would bet that, I would bet 95-plus percent of the out-of-town people probably came back, and probably the people we lost were, were more locals that just decided, hey, I'm going to walk home or take a quick drive home.
One other observation on an opportunity for future events, is that there seemed to be a choke point at entry, and some people were waiting in extremely long lines, and I don't know what you can do about that with the time it takes to go through the necessary security precautions, but whether there's a way to encourage people to come earlier or some other way to handle that. But I think some folks got a little frustrated at that.
Friday's the bigger challenge than Saturday, because of the, we have a longer day on Saturday, and the entertainment's spread out longer. You know, we're right after work, so we're, it is a challenge, and we, we opened up more gates this year, and it was still a choke point. Obviously, we're doing bag checks for obvious reasons in this day and age, so we, we're still looking for ways to expedite that, but not compromise safety. We try to get it open as early as we can, but we also can only open it once they finish soundcheck, so it's a, we have a, it's a, it's a tough one, that we don't have the total answer for yet.
So, are-
You know, on a Friday night, you know, 3,500 people showing up-
In, within a 45-minute period of time.
45-minute window, where that's really much more spread out over the Saturday.
So, we're confident that 2019 is going to happen?
That's our intention. I mean, we, we had a long conference call with Bruce's team last week to make sure he's still interested, and I think everyone wants to move forward, absolutely.
I would just say, our plan is to get with the City Manager and his staff to try to come, get on your agenda sometime in the next couple of months to give you a, a full vision for 2019.
Great. One lasting comment. Thinking about where Festival Williamsburg started, whether it was the tent in the Sunken Gardens, or moving into the Virginia Room at the Lodge, this is, this event is so different from any other event that happens in the greater Williamsburg community, that I think it catches people by surprise when they see it, experience it, hear about it. And the one comment I heard more often than anything is, this doesn't, this doesn't look like something in Williamsburg. And so, for any folks who are wondering what we're talking about with vibrancy, that's the kind of idea, that we can rebrand the experience of visiting here as a broader, more engaging opportunity for wider audiences. So thanks for being a big part of that.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Our next item on the agenda is the TDF Process Update Report. Mr. Trivet and Ms. DeWitt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I think Michelle is going to give the report today with some assistance.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We're back to talk about the Tourism Development Fund process as we move forward. And to give you the highlights now, and then I'll go through some more detail in the slide deck. Last month, August 6th, we presented to council, asking for your input on how we move forward. And today, the changes we heard from council receive from you include adding an ex officio member to the Tourism Grant Review Committee from the Planning Commission and one from the Economic Development Authority. And by doing that, it actually shortens the grant cycle by two steps. And then, secondly, to organize, have council appoint the Tourism Development Review Committee and have their input into the public meetings that we suggest be held this fall. So now I'll go through how we got there. So last year, council established the policy document for the Tourism Development Grant Fund, and determined that there would be a review committee that would recommend to council how things are funded, and approve some funding commitments that are in this year's fiscal, fiscal year budget. And here's a reminder of how the funds are occurring. Through Senate Bill- occurring. Through Senate Bill 942, there's a new one percent sales tax in the region. And then there's the two-dollar room tax as well. Those funds are collected by the state and then, well, the two dollars is collected by us, but the one percent sales tax is collected by the state. Half of those monies go to the new tourism council that will be doing destination marketing for the region. The other half of the funds go back to the locality where they were collected. And so, the half coming back to, you see the half coming back here to Williamsburg, goes into our tourism fund. And then through your budget process for fiscal year 19, the current budget cycle, they're divided into these areas you see coming off of the tourism fund. So, there's fifty thousand dollars for tourism contingency, a hundred thousand dollars for occasion for the arts and culture fix events this year, a hundred and fifty thousand for the initial implementation of downtown vibrancy. And then what we're talking about today is the two-point-one million for the tourism development grants, which is that purple shape to the far right. So, the fund policy was adopted by city council. And as we talked about it, involved appointing a review committee who will make recommendations to the city council. City council is the one who will determine how the funds and the grants are used, but there is a review committee to assist with that. And so, this is the, based on council's input last month, this is the, these are the members of the, this review committee. You see there's a tourism industry representative, two of, two of the, no, three, sorry. Three of those and then two at-large community appointments. And there also now is a planning commission, ex officio member and an EDA ex officio member. Again, to streamline that process and not have to take two more steps in the cycle to get EDA and planning commission input. Two-year terms with a three-term limit. And so, if you add that together, there's six years of service possible for members on this committee. So, the next steps for city council are to make committee appointments to that review committee and then establish the considerations for the awards, how the grant awards will be made, and then create an application process. So, the new recommendations that I mentioned at the beginning that are on the table right now are to hold, again, hold two public meetings to solicit input on what projects should look like and what the important elements should be. And the review committee will help format those meetings to elicit that public comment and the award considerations. And also through our IT department, we're able to use a survey tool to gather a larger pool of input from the citizens. And so, the design application will be based on award considerations to receive required information for uniform review. So, there will be considerations for what will determine grants to be funded. And then we're going to also alter the, we suggest altering the application schedule and separating it from the budget process. So, we talked about that a lot in, last month on August 6th, to separate this from the budget. The fear was if you, if you align them together, one could get lost, either the, the operating budget and the CIP or the tourism grants. So, we've, we've separated them. Also, we needed to do that, giving the timing of the decision, the, the Senate Bill 942 and the funding of the, of the Tourism Development Fund. So, this was the application cycle you talked about last year. And I'm going to move right through to what we talked about last month. Here it comes. And these were the steps when we talked to council, we talked about is are there ways to streamline this? Because there's quite a few steps. Here they come.
Can we also speed up the slide?
Makes you dizzy.
Sorry. I should have practiced this with it in live motion. I didn't. But, so, there, there were eight steps last month when we talked to you and, and clearly felt like that could be streamlined. So, here we go. The streamline eliminates two of those cycles. So, the first phase is a staff review that we always talked about that would start in March. And that's a step one, where interested applicants can, can file an application and discuss it with staff, whether they think it, it is worthy of moving on to phase two. And then phase two would be a longer period, a more in-depth application. So, if you make it through phase one and given the green light to move to phase two, then you may spend some more money on doing engineering or financial feasibility or architectural items to move into that complete application. Then we have a tourism, the Tourism Development Grant Review Committee with those ex officio members from the Planning Commission and the EDA sitting in on this review, doing the review and making recommendations to city council for its approval. And so, that will lead us into September with the applicant, the contracts underway by October 1st. And then, of course, there'll be applicant and staff interviews. Some people will not be funded and they'll want to know why and, and discuss that with staff as, as they perhaps move into another project in the future. So, how this would play out in this fall is city council would appoint the review committee. And then we'll hold two public meetings to inform the grant award criteria. And then we'll move into adoption of all that. So, we'll go back and look at the policy document that, that you passed last year. And this is where all those changes will officially be made, come to council in the winter. And then by March, we'll be promoting the application. It will be open for the first round of applications to come in. And then go through that, the shorter wheel that I just showed you, and October have, have projects under contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. I just want to thank staff for, you know, listening to council at last month's meeting and then talking with us individually over the last month to come up with this new streamlined process, shortening, shortening the calendar, getting the, the task force assembled sooner rather than later. So, I think we've come a long way. And so, I'm anxious to, to get this going so that we can start investing funds and developing products that help grow our economy. So, that's why. So, I think we're at a good spot. So, thank you.
I concur with Mr. Ponce's comment, but I did have a couple of questions. So, if we can turn to the slide with the TD Grant Program Review Committee, I just kind of want to flush it out a little bit more. And I know a lot of this is just an ideas phase, but I'm just curious to see how staff has contemplated some of, perhaps some of these, these questions or hypotheticals or whatever. But, yes. So, in terms of the at-large community appointments and also tourism industry representatives, has staff thought of, you know, kind of like the contours of what those folks look like? Or is it pretty fluid? Like, for example, you know, tourism industry representative seems pretty, pretty straightforward, right? We have hoteliers, we've got restaurateurs, we've got special events folks. But has it also, is it also fluid? Or does it also extend to perhaps entrepreneurs like the brewery folks that we have in town that have in some way incidental to our tourism? I, I didn't know if staff had a, had a, you know, set, you know, it must be hoteliers or it must be restaurateurs or it's, or is it something more fluid?
No, I believe the policy actually says just owning a business in the city. So, they don't even have to live in the city, but if they own one of those businesses that you mentioned in the city, they would be, be qualified.
And that could extend to also at-large community appointments too, right?
The at-large, I'm going to have to ask for Chris and Drew's assistance. Does that need to be a resident or can that be?
Now, the way the policy is written, it's, it's, it's very open. So, there's no definition for tourism industry representative. There's no definition for at-large, other than the restrictions that Michelle listed, which were you have to either live in the city, own a business in the city, or run an event in the city to qualify to be on the, the committee.
So, hypothetically, what could happen if council decided to do this is we could have, you know, let's say the three, we choose three brewers to be our tourism industry reps. And then the two others, let's say there are other two brewery owners who want to get in on this and they somehow get appointed. So, it's feasible to have five of these folks, right? Or you can throw hoteliers or anything.
Can I jump in here for a second? We make the appointments.
Right.
So, that's only feasible if we make that happen. So, I, I think we're going to be looking for a diverse group of people who broadly represent the industry and the community. And I think it's incumbent upon each of us to challenge the others if we see something getting out of balance. But that is our decision to make, who gets appointed. We can't control who applies.
Right. And I think it, generally the point is, and thinking deciding, moving this forward and seeing other localities and other states doing this, some of them are, you know, all tourism representative boards. So, I guess within each different, you know, successive generations of city councils, they might have different definitions of it. So, I just wanted to flush that out and just be more, a little bit more clear about, you know, it's, I guess it's just very broad and we can appoint whoever we want.
Yes, exactly.
So, that's basically the point. It could be all hoteliers, it could be diverse, it could be whatever, right?
And if we find that doesn't work, we can also modify that as we go along.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. I'm just curious about what staff was thinking with this. I guess when, you know, staff participating in a lot of research with other competitive localities that we draw inspiration with, I don't know if you, if staff had contacted the staff liaisons over there and just had any lessons learned with their review committee makeups. I'm thinking Buncombe County, just any, anything to be aware about that they had not contemplated that we have the time and.
Sure. I'll let Drew answer, but I'll first say that almost all of those conversations that, that I had started with, when you figure it out, Williamsburg, tell us how to do it. But Drew also had some with Asheville and some other.
Yeah. So, if you remember back, well, it's been over a year ago now, when we were talking about forming the Tourism Development Fund, I contacted, I think, five different localities that have similar programs all over the country and asked them five of the same questions. You know, what, what kind of lessons did, did we take away? How did you form it? Those kinds of things. What would you tell us now after operating it for ten, seventeen years, as the case may be? And we got very good input. Some of the, the major takeaways were make sure that you promote the successes that come out of it and also have some good, strong considerations for giving out the award monies. Those were the two major takeaways from all the localities that are doing it now. In terms of membership to the committee, that's not something that we asked. And that's primarily because even of those that we contacted, they were all doing the same process very, very differently. And we talked about that ad nauseam, to the point of Virginia Beach is doing it like a CIP program where the city council just decides how to spend this money, all the way to the Asheville model, which is the one that we've gravitated, gravitated more towards. And that's a grant cycle. Now, the big difference and the reason that we can't turn to Asheville for every step of this process is that their grant program is run through the regional chamber of commerce. And so, it's structured very, very differently than what we would structure for a municipal-led program.
Right. And one, I think it's good that I haven't heard, that we haven't really heard of any lessons learned with it. But one thing that just came in my mind, that's, you know, a possibility, given that we are embarking on this tourism, you know, infrastructure investment. We want to invest in big projects and look for that, you know, that, pave that economic future. I didn't know if there was anything in particular like Virginia Beach, if they had conflicts between, you know, the review selection committee felt this way. And obviously, council gets the final say. But you're also appointing, you know, representatives on the, you know, tourism experts on these boards. And I just didn't know if there was ever some of that button heads, but it looks like there wasn't.
Not that we've been told, no.
Okay. Final question. In terms of the Tourism Contingency Fund with like occasion with the arts, Steve Rose's Culture Fix, those, are those funds subject to review with the Grant Program Review Committee? Or is this just a separate line item?
Those are, those are separate and have been approved as part of your fiscal year 19 budget. So.
Right, right, right.
I think certainly.
But in the future, that would just come straight to council. That's not going through.
I think that's, I think that's up to council in the future, whether to continue to do those direct allocations, separate from the grant cycle, or to bundle it all into the, the grant cycle.
Well, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle, for, for the information and the updated. I like the, the sort of streamlined process. And you can keep it right there. Sorry to Benny's point. I've had two people contact me with interest in serving on the Grant Review Committee. And I didn't know, do we have an application that they'll be filling out and, and submitting? And then we'll review it like we do for other boards and commissions for the appointments? Is that the idea?
Yes. And so, it's the same application that citizens fill out for any other board or commission appointment from city council. And there is now a Tourism Development Review Committee checkbox. If they're interested in that, they check that box. We've already had at least one, we may have had more, but one person that I'm aware of who already had an application on file has called and asked to be added to the Tourism Development Fund Committee.
Oh, good. Okay. So, that could be three. And, and I look at tourism industry as, as very broad. To Paul's point, I think that, you know, diversity is, is great for this because we have such a breadth and depth of professionals here, whether they work for tourism industries, whether they've put on events, whether they're retired travel agency, or all different things that I think can fill these, these categories in and will get some, some good input there. And as far as the, I think it's the next slide where you go to the different phases.
Of the, the eras at the end.
Right. And the next one. So, how much time are you allocating for each phase? So, when, when the application is there, will it say, if you submit your application, say the first of March, you'll be notified by a month?
Right. The notifications would happen within a month for that first phase. But then we wanted to give four to six weeks for someone to file a, a phase two application because it'll be much more in-depth and require more time. Like I said, they may have to hire some professional services to get that done. So, there is a, a larger space between A and B, allowing six weeks for the applications to be refined and sent in. But the phase one decision will be made pretty quickly, then six weeks to get the phase two in. And then the Grant Review Committee, we've put in some time for them to visit sites, to do some research and things of that sort. And that happens through the summer to go to city council by September.
So, all of that will be spelled out in the application as to how much time there'll be between each step for the applicant to be prepared.
And, you know, just to add on to that, we certainly don't want people to get married to this format because as we go through it in the first year, there'll be a lot of lessons learned, as Mr. Zhang said. And we'll probably make some changes to this, including how long it takes us to get from A to B.
And, and the goal is not to spend all of the, the money that's in there. If there are some big-ticket items that might need to piggyback for a little bit, then, then that's part of the process as well.
Sure, exactly. And also, the council's current policy allows it to commit future funds to, so to pay overtime for something, a big item.
Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle. Two questions on, on that slide there. The, what, what is the community going to be able to see in terms of like a bird's eye view of what's going on within our little circle there? Are they going to be able to see the different applications going forward and create their own brackets and see what they're predicting in terms of successes?
Ooh, like a sweet sixteen pool? Is that what you're suggesting?
So, I think in, in phase two, there might be some confidential business information that has to be held confidentially, which is, is normal in the Economic Development Office. So, that happening under our office would make sense there. But the review committee meetings are going to be open to the public. Certainly, the city council decision-making is open to the public. And then anything that goes under contract is open to the public as well.
And then the second question is if, if there's a project that really relies on partnership with the college, you have the jurisdictions, how much, where in this cycle do you think you would have to be able to demonstrate that there's enough traction before you bring in other partners?
Interesting question. So, I would think you'd want that done by phase two deadline. So, phase one, so that, that's going to be six weeks. So, that's, that's a lot of time to get your partners on board. So, hopefully you've talked to them prior to phase one. But if phase one comes in and gets a green light based on the, what the council has set for wanting to see, then between phase one and phase two, most certainly you'd want to get those commitments.
Thank you.
Ms. DeWitt, we could go back to the flow of funds, regional, local tourism. One of the things that we discussed was council's prior efforts in helping to fund these smaller-scale events who need marketing money or maybe some money to help get an event off the ground in the first year. So, those grants would now come out of the Tourism Contingency Fund?
Correct.
And the logic for that was that most of these things happen on a short-term basis. And so, to have somebody go through a six-month process doesn't, it's not really helpful to the types of needs that we've been addressing in the past. So, those decisions will be made directly by council as they come in.
Correct, yes.
And so, there's not a, a def, there's not a particular timeframe that applications for tourism contingency have to be in by this date. It's, it's just ongoing throughout the year.
It's ongoing, like, like it's been in previous years.
And then just like with the Tourism Development Fund, we don't have to spend all of that money just because it's in the pot. And we can roll that over into future years and continue to use that for that same purpose. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, that's. Yes, that's fair. Um, and also, your, your new review committee may have some knowledge and expertise, and they may recommend you need more, um, tourism contingency-type funds for spur the, spur, or, or more quick decisions than six-month process. But, but right now we're outlining that six-month process and see how it goes.
And I just want to explain, one of the other thoughts about why we would want to do it that way is so the review committee doesn't get distracted with a lot of little requests coming in. They can focus more on the bigger projects that we hope will, pardon the cliche, but move the needle to a greater degree by virtue of their impact.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? I, I think this, this is a, it's great. It reflects the conversation from last month, and we'll look forward to moving forward together.
Thank you.
Thanks. We, our next presentation is the Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes Presentation. Mr. Andrew Trivett, interim city manager. Unless you're going to defer to someone else.
No, I think I'll do this.
All right. So the purpose of today's, um, presentation on the Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes is just to update you all on what we've been doing and where we're going. There's a couple of minor changes that we would like to have the council keep in mind as we move through the process, and, and so that's what today's presentation is all about. Here is the vision statement that is currently guiding the Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes. I've highlighted there in blue the change that we made last year where we added and innovating to the vision statement. Um, so this is one of those things that's somewhat static in that we don't give it a lot of attention. We'll talk about it in our retreat and consider making some minor changes to it, um, but we don't typically make a, a tremendous amount of change to the vision statement. As the department heads and the executive team, as we now call them, meet to talk about issues every week, we've been using that time, in fact, uh, probably much to their chagrin, a lot of their time, to talk about the GIOs over the last four weeks. And we started out with a real intense discussion of the National Citizen Survey results, and so I put up here on the slide the results as it related to our vision statement. If you remember, when we talked about kicking off National Citizen Survey for this year, we talked about how we split the vision statement up into its individual parts, and we asked the community how they thought the city was doing with each one of those. And it's really kind of interesting to look at how this data relates to the data from the rest of the questions. And there is a lot of correlation as you get down to these lower sections where we had numbers that were not as high as we might have wanted them to be. And then we looked at the areas of focus from the National Citizen Survey. So I've pulled out all of the ones that were less than 60%, and that's just an arbitrary number that I selected to look at so that we could see how those lower-performing areas really shook out and whether or not they deserve special attention as we moved into the goal-setting process. Um, what's interesting is, as we move through the slides, you'll see some of the, the lower numbers are actually positives. So that 60% number doesn't really help in every single category. But a couple of things that jump out on the, the first grouping, which is community character, obviously affordable quality housing, that's a topic that we wrestle with every year in the GIO document, uh, employment opportunities. So these are not real surprises in terms of topics that the community thinks we still need to address. Same thing for governance. We talked a lot about, when we had the National Citizen Survey report, the numbers for street repair and snow removal and the reasons that they might be low. We did talk quite a bit at the department head level about cable television as, as a low number and what impacts we might have as a community on that one, um, and it was an interesting conversation. And then the last one is participation, and this is the one where some of these numbers are actually probably a good thing, that they're lower. Um, but there's still some areas there that, that are interesting as they relate to a topic that we've talked a lot about, and that's communication. The one that I would point you to is attended the local public meeting, 27%. So I think you could argue that the public meeting that we expect everyone to come and provide input to is really not the best vehicle for gathering that input anymore. And so maybe the GIOs in this biennium is a good opportunity for us to do a, a deep dive, if you'll use that expression, into communication in the city of Williamsburg and try to identify better vehicles for getting that input than what we're currently using now. So just looking at this current biennium's, uh, GIO document, I put together this, what I consider to be quirky, slide that explains the current setup. So there are eight goals, those are the numbers at the top and the bottom of the grid, and then in the middle are the actual initiatives prescribed to each one of those goals. So goal one, character of the city, that's 22 different initiatives included in that goal set, all the way to number eight, where we had 13 different initiatives, for a total of 124 goals, initiatives, and outcomes in the document. Um, now, while that may not seem like a lot for a two-year period, for a, a city of just over 200 employees, that's a tremendous undertaking, especially when some of those initiatives were very broad goals, uh, like affordable housing. And two years as a biennium is just not a long enough time for us to make a decision on what to do with affordable housing, and then more importantly, measure the outcome of what that decision had. So here are two examples of some of the initiatives from this year's document. Food truck policy, the, the reason I put that one up there is not that we did it, only I'm pointing out that that one is a very measurable outcome, right? It says, "Do this thing and accomplish this task." And so when I sit down to do the scorecard of how we did at the end of this calendar year, that one's easy. Either we did adopt it or we did not adopt it. Uh, whereas the other one, the quarter path development, not to say that this isn't a good goal or initiative that should be a target, but we really need to think about this year how we reword that type of, of initiative to make sure that the outcome is measurable. Because when I sit down to do the score on that one, I struggle with, is that a check or an X? Because what it says is, "Work with Riverside to accomplish, uh, commercial development in the quarter path development." And obviously, we have worked with Riverside over the last two years, but we don't have a new product to demonstrate that success. And so we just need to be keeping that in mind as we put together a new list. So I put this slide on here because I wanted to show you the difficulty of this despite the facts overwhelming desire to have this list of GIOs be much shorter and focused. Here are just four of those goals and the list that we came up with after four weeks of working on it. And so we did not achieve the goal of having these be shorter and more focused. I think that if you dig into these, which I don't encourage you to do, you'll see that there are a lot more detailed steps to take here, so I feel more confident that these tasks are, are very measurable. Uh, but we still left, we're left with a taste for a way to kind of focus this down. And so we stumbled across kind of an exercise of looking across the state at what other communities are doing for strategic planning, and we looked at good examples and bad examples. I'm sparing you the ones that we considered bad because I'd have to blur their names or something so we didn't make them feel bad about their process, but we did like Alamoara Counties. And the reason that we liked it was because they accomplished essentially what I think in our minds we're striving for, and that is breaking down a large list of goals and objectives and initiatives into tier one, tier two, and tier three. And what that signifies is not that one is, um, important and one is not, but there are tiers of importance. So it kind of sets the stage for what is really important that we accomplish in the short term versus what is it important that we study in the intermediate term versus what is it that we think about for the long term. The other thing that is great about what Alamoara County's process has done is they've taken the document that in our case is 60 to 80 pages long and turned it into a six or 10-page pamphlet that outlines what we're going to be doing over that strategic planning period. Another thing that I would point out that we learned at looking across the state is the strategic planning period often was much longer than two years. In, in most cases, it was five. And then there might be a two-year work plan that was more focused of what was going to be accomplished. Uh, the thing that I like about Alamoara County is what they did was they had a process of kind of, everybody uses the expression of making the sausage in government. And so that's the tier one, tier three document that I showed you. And then they filtered that down, and what you might be able to see is that on their document, they've taken the tier ones and the tier twos and tier threes and grouped them into new categories called highest priority strategic objectives, which are the tier one set, and then the tier two and tier three fall into this category, which I really like the naming of, strategic objectives requiring further development. So those are things that we know need to be done, we know we need to be talking about them during this biennium, but there's a lot of work to do there before we're able to establish measurable goals, measurable outcomes. And so the reason I put this slide on here is I want you to be thinking about this type of strategic planning as we move more deep into your process that will, of course, start with the collection of the department heads' goals that we've done, move into a public process where we collect some goals, initiatives, and outcomes from them, and then bring it back to city council for your retreat where we'll present kind of the results of all that fact-finding. So now, talking about important dates, uh, we have established public workshop dates, thankfully, September the 20th and September the 21st, two different dates this year. The first one, the September the 20th date, is going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 here in this building, hopefully in the large conference room, and, um, it's going to be a very similar format to what we have done in the past, although in the past, it has been sort of structured that you have to show up at the start and you're there until the end because it had a flow to it. There were activities that happened at certain times during the night. We are working to break this up so that it's like a stationed event. If you've been to a VDOT meeting, it works very much like this, where you can show up at your leisure, go through the processes, go to each station, go to only the ones that interest you, provide your input, and then leave, um, so that it's, it's less requirement that you participate the whole time. And so we use that format for both of these. On September the 21st, we're going to do something differently than we've done in the past. We're going to hold a meeting on the campus of William &amp; Mary. Uh, right now, we think that meeting is going to be in the Sadler Center, but we're wait, waiting on confirmation. And I think that it's going to be from 2:00 to 4:00 is the dates or the times that, uh, the college has asked us to utilize. And despite the fact that that meeting is on campus, it doesn't mean that it's only open to the students. If there's a member of the, the public that would like to come to that, please feel welcome. It's just another public meeting. Um, so we should get some really good feedback from that. We're kind of excited to see how the new format works. And then some important dates for city council, of course, providing public comment. You can do that at any of the public meetings that happen between now and adoption of the GIOs. Those are the dates shown on that screen. And then adding to that, we have the State of the City event, which this year will be November the 15th from 5:00 to 7:00. It's the same date that it has been every year. Um, so we'll keep that tradition alive. And, um, as I said, we've covered all of the other events. Right now, we're looking at dates for the city council retreat, and I think that we have one that is most popular amongst all the members of city council at this point, and we'll be circulating that around for final approval. If we can't make that work, we've tried very hard to have the retreat this year be a weeknight as opposed to a weekend to see how that affects the attendance, not only by the public, but to make it a little easier for the staff to participate in as well. And, uh, but if we can't make that work, we'll go back to the tried and true of looking at the Saturday. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Well, you know, so, um, first thing that jumps out at me is, is, is how we can extend the period. Instead of making it a, you know, totally a biennium goals initiative for two years, um, it does make sense we kind of extend it out, um, because I think that also allows then the economic development plan that the EDA puts together and that, you know, comprehensive planning, um, reviews that, that happen can also dovetail into this. And then, um, it, it does, as it says, um, allow some time to, to, to accomplish some of those goals and, and, you know, put together a real strategy, um, to, to have some measured, measured outcome. So I, I think that's a good thing to consider, um, and I look forward to stepping into this process and having the conversation with the council.
Thank you for your presentation, Drew. Um, I think there's some, a lot of great things that came out of this, um, presentation, and really interested to see as we move along with this process how the new strategic frame, framework will work. And my understanding is that this is not just a, you know, all-out change, it's going to be processed throughout time. Um, and, and I think that's wise. Um, in terms of the on-campus public meeting, what are some of city staff's thoughts in terms of drawing out more student input?
Well, that's.
Contacting clubs or, you know, we had a city intern that was a student, but I guess has, has the F thought of any way to try to reach out to student body with that?
That's certainly the intent of having this meeting. Um, you know, I think that the college would have preferred us, if they had their druthers, they would have preferred us to have this meeting on a different day than Friday and to do it at night. Um, and so, well, that's something that we can consider. You know, the way that we've approached change generally in the city during this time of change is to do it in baby steps, you know, so that it's not too abrupt and not too abrasive. Um, having the meeting on campus, I think, is a big change in and of itself.
First thought?
And so we're anxious to see what kind of turnout we get. Uh, we talked at the department head level about, do you change the questions, the format to make it more intriguing to the students? And the decision was no. In order to keep the, the results comparable, we wanted it to, to stay the same. So it's going to be the exact same format, the exact same questions that we ask. Um, and we're kind of excited, I think, to see what the students have to provide in a bigger way than they have in the past, because we've really not had, at least in the, the one that I've participated in, there's not been a tremendous amount of students who came and, and participated. So I think we're kind of excited about it. In terms of how to push out the news, uh, I know that, uh, Ms. Hartman is doing our communications, and she's going to be on that as soon as we can nail down the location and the, the details with the college. Um, circulating amongst the groups that we all have the opportunity to talk to is a great idea.
And all these dates that you had mentioned already in your presentation, that's available online. If you just Google Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes, Williamsburg, it should be all, all there, right? And that's been finalized.
Right. Ms. Hartman, this year, I think, has done an outstanding job with the website for the Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes. If you go there, it's organized really well as far as outlining all the opportunities, and it's, it's almost overwhelming, the number of opportunities that you have to come and share your thoughts on this.
Well, that's great. So, thank you.
I don't have any, uh, questions. Just think that particularly streamlining the, the whole amount of information is, is helpful, and I like too what you showed about Alamoara as far as presenting it in a sort of a compressed, um, package. I think it's very difficult for citizens to now go to the website and, and see and try and understand what progress has been made over the past two years. So, ready to move forward.
Thanks, Drew. Thinking to the session at the college, one of the things I, I think we saw at the forum, the candidate forum two years ago was that some of the students weren't really recognizing the college's responsibility versus the city's. And I think it'd be really helpful to make sure there's an empowered, uh, team from the college there that could handle questions and issues that relate to the college and, and don't really relate to the city as much or, or require the partnership of the two.
That's a good comment. I don't think we've given a lot of thought to asking the college to have staff there as well, but that's a, that's a good idea.
Thanks.
Very much agree with Mr. Brown's point about the value of the longer-term horizon, that five-year look at what, what the city wants to accomplish. I think the one thing we need to be careful of or just mindful of is that just because there's a five-year window doesn't mean, wow, that's a really hard problem, so we're not going to worry about that till two years from now, because that's a natural tendency i- in these processes. So, um, I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to come up with some steps or milestones along the way that we hit on these longer-range projects, even though if it, it may not be the ultimate completion of it, we, we have to demonstrate some progress, uh, each year. So thank, thank you for all of this.
Sure. I think, I think that's an excellent point, Mayor. Um, one of the goals, one of the initiatives that the department heads put on our list is to begin kind of a more earnest conversation during this bi, coming biennium about strategic planning generally in the city. And it may be time to really just open the hood on the GIO process and, and make some, some more significant change in how we develop it, particularly as it, as it relates to that vision statement that hasn't changed in a while, and then the goals that correspond to achieving that vision. Um, during our briefings, as we talked about the meeting today, I mentioned the fact that you may want to just think briefly about the vision statement that we have. Is that a statement of what we want the city to be or a statement of what we think the city already is? Uh, because when I read it, I, I think we all agree the city's already there. And so if you're trying to set goals to achieve a vision, it's hard to do that if you're, you've already achieved it. And so we may want to stretch ourselves a little further as we look at that. But I think deciding to extend the timeframe is a question that we shouldn't make quickly, and this is a process that's served the city very well for a long time, and so we want to make measured change. Um, so let's take it slow.
Great. Thank you. This takes us to city council communications. Anything any council member would like to share?
Well, I'll just share that, uh, as you know, I serve on the Tourism Council, uh, the recently established Tourism Council. We had a, a meeting, uh, recently where the, the Tourism Task Force kind of handed over the reins to the Tourism Council, uh, kind of next, and there is a, a meeting scheduled for, I believe, September 18th. Um, in the meantime, there's two task force, uh, underway. One is for the search committee for the executive director, which I have the honor of chairing, uh, and then a bylaws committee as well that, former council member Mickey Shawon is chairing that. So work is underway there.
And I like to report from the other side of the council, on the business council, we, uh, the executive committee recently made a unanimous decision to hire Ms. Terry Benez as our interim executive director for the business council side of the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance. Chamber and Tourism Alliance. So I'd like to congratulate Terry and wish her well and working together and forging this strong alliance.
Nothing other than there is an EDA meeting.
Okay, this takes us to schedule of meetings for September 2018. Mr. Trivitt, anything you'd like to highlight?
Just a couple of things. There's a community forum on housing scheduled for September the 12th. And of course, that is still scheduled dependent upon the storm and its impacts. I think Ms. Murphy and I had talked about this earlier today. We'll probably make the decision on whether or not we're going to have that meeting tomorrow based on the storm's forecast. And then, of course, the GIO meetings that I've already covered, and City Council Retreat, hopefully early October, and then wrap up the process with the State of the City in November.
This takes us to the open forum portion of our meeting. Anybody who'd like to address council on any matter is welcome to come forward. We just ask that you state your name and address, and if you could limit your remarks to five minutes, we would appreciate that.
My name's Ryan Phillips. I live at 310 Patriot Lane, Williamsburg, Virginia. And so today, I would like to propose that the codes of the city of Williamsburg be rewritten to reflect our evolved understanding of companion animals, to include many pigs under that definition. It's largely undisputed at this point that pigs are the fourth most intelligent animal on the planet, if you don't include humans, which is disputable. But dogs falling at a 10th place in most rankings. They've reportedly, pigs, shown themselves to be capable of learning commands, behaviors, and tricks as quickly or more so than dogs. And if you sneak into my home any night, you will find three pigs snuggled on top of us, which just shows how extremely social and affectionate that they are. Further, the animals collectively known as mini pigs have never been or in any way defined as livestock. You will never find a restaurant that serves them, at least one that you would want to eat at, and that would be legal to eat at because the USDA doesn't label them or in any way inspect them as food. So listing them as livestock in our codes is misleading and disingenuous. Further, being out with our pigs in Colonial Williamsburg, I weekly meet people who live in the city of Williamsburg that have many pigs as pets. And I hear them talk about how amazing they are, but also how they fear taking them out in public, how they fear taking them into their yard, because they don't know where that falls in the codes. And so this is obviously, I feel, a disservice to those people and to the pigs that are basically living and hiding. In the two years that we've taken our pigs to Williamsburg, Colonial Williamsburg, to Yankee Candle, Michael's Craft Store, Waller Mill Park, or basically anywhere in town that is animal-friendly, we've never had a safety issue or any kind of danger with our mini pigs walking amongst us, just smiles and people telling us that it's made their day. Usually, we have all kinds of people wanting to take pictures with them or ask us questions because they're interested in what it's like to have many pigs. And considering that one in 69 people are bitten by a dog each year, it seems hard to claim that it's a safety concern that we ban pigs without subsequently banning dogs, clearly when there's obviously a safety issue there. A common fear is that pigs are dirty, noisy, or smelly, but pigs are one of the cleanest animals if given the chance. And even my mother-in-law can't believe how great our apartment smell, or our condo smells, despite the fact that we live with pigs to her dismay. I think pigs offer a lot to our city. First, they reflect our claim to be a revolutionary city that stands for liberty and justice for all. So denying access to pigs based on the fact that they are pigs seems more tyrannical, like something King George might do, than something that a city that prides itself on standing for justice would do. And so I think also bringing pigs into the city allows for more tourism and people to feel welcome here and could bring business, because once we became part of the pig community, you realize that people that have snouted children are extremely passionate about it, insanely passionate to the point where if they felt like they weren't welcome here, they're going to tell everyone and their brother that they feel that way because they love their pigs so much. And, you know, living with pigs for two years, we've quickly realized why. Pigs put a smile on everyone's face. We just took Charlotte, our one pig, to Home Depot the other day, and I must have had 100 people take pictures with her, ask us questions, you know, employees come to meet her. And she just follows along right beside us the way, you know, a well-behaved dog would. So I think it just adds the happiness of our city. It makes it a more welcoming place for people if they want to travel here, that want to bring their pigs that are well-behaved, like we would a dog. It lets them know that they can come here on a trip. Try to rush through this. So, and having lived with three pigs in a condo for two years, which is insane, I admit, we haven't had a single complaint from a single one of our neighbors. We haven't had anyone have an issue with it. We haven't had an issue when we're out with them. And when you live in a condo with, you know, neighbors on all sides of you, below you and around you, to not have someone have an issue with it, you know, shows, in fact, the most common comment we hear is they're quieter than dogs. So I'm confident we can find a solution to any problems that might come up or that someone might see with pigs so that they can come out of the shadows. My family's willing to share our knowledge, to hold classes, to talk to people about what's involved so that people don't get into having a mini pig for the wrong reason. They do get bigger than the tiny little things that they promise on, you know, the ads. And so we're willing to do that, and I hope you'll join me in making this an equitable and entirely just move to include many pigs under the definition of companion animals.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address council? Please come forward. Okay, with that, I believe we have an item for close, or items for closed session.
Yeah, three, sir. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2-2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personal matter pursuant to Subparagraph 1 regarding appointments to boards and commissions, and also one legal matter per Subparagraph 8 for the purpose of receiving consultation from legal counsel regarding the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and one matter pursuant to Subparagraph 39 regarding to confidential and proprietary, excuse me.
Proprietary?
Thank you. Information furnished by a business located in the city. Proprietary, there you go.
Second.
Mr. Leeco, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ponce.
Aye.
Mr. Zane.
Aye.
Council will take a brief break and reconvene in closed session.